Providing funding for banner covers. So currently they, there's banner covers on the water wells during the season. And they'll pay for some additional ones for the by some time this company.
Okay, so then I guess we'll stick with you. Is there anything from your community development?
So what you've got is my report to council after last meeting. It's becoming rather cumbersome to try and do a council. So this gives you everything I probably would have put in yours anyway, and even more. So, excuse me, if you've got any questions for me, I know this just came out as a supplement. Nothing or shedding, just sort of keeping you up to date on things that are going forward. But I will give a shout out to Grace. She applied for a DTE grant and paying that on behalf of the citizens.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's see, so it's me, Development Office. Okay, so at this time, we are for citizens in Washington to address the commission. So this would be the opportunity that if anybody wants to speak, I know we have a lot of members of the public here that are probably for our Pelham site plan project. So this would be the time that if you would like to speak to that project, if you want to step forward and say your name and address, and leave your comments, do five minutes or less. But this time we'll open the public hearing, or sorry, but yeah, it's not a public hearing.
You already had it, this is not arranged.
You're right, that's not arranged, citizen participation, not a public hearing.
Been here all my life. And I would just like to say that, does anybody here know how many condos have been built in Dexter in the last five years? And the population of Dexter, Washinaw County is going down. The population of Michigan is going down. So I'm not sure we need this many more households. The average age in Dexter is thirty eight. At thirty eight years old, what do you do? You're raising kids. Who wants to raise their kids in a condo? The average household income, it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars. These condos that are in Dexter already and probably the ones they're trying to build, go from four hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of money for a condo, and people that make a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. The birth rate in the state, in the county is down, and the state is down, plus people are leaving. In the year two thousand, the density in this population was one thousand two hundred and thirty six people per mile. The density is now two thousand one hundred and seventy four. Since two thousand, the population, the increase is ninety two percent. And I say this not because the people that bought the land, I realized they really got a raw deal. And I believe those Metro Parks that gave them the raw deal, and they deserved to sell that deed. And they didn't clean it up, so they deserve to get out from under that. But is it this what should be put in its place? Now they said, you know, the county doesn't have nothing to do with the road, they're gonna put in a roundabout. Okay, so there's fifty six parking spots. So if everybody drove a mini cooper, you'd have five cars in the roundabout coming just from this condo structure. Five times a day, ten times a day, five times leaving, five times coming back. And that's if they're bumper to bumper in the roundabout. Now, if you put them both at a bumper and go through town, they're gonna go all the way to town in, at any direction you wanna go. And you may not think that's a lot of new traffic, but I personally have lived here all my life. And I drive around this town now. When I leave my home to go somewhere, I drive around Dexter because it's so congested. I don't park in this town, because if you can find a parking spot, you can get out. Did I mention that we've built seventeen subdivisions in the last twenty years? I was here when there was no subdivisions. So, you know, it's a, it's a long history for me to look back at. But I've watched all of these subdivisions get built, and I still miss them. I drove around and looked at all the new subdivisions. On here, River Drive, there's five new subdivisions. That's not counting Wrath Creek, which takes up half of the, half of the distance between here and River Drive and Master Road. No, it takes it all, I'm sorry. And we have Island Lake Road. We have new, at least three new subdivisions on Island Lake Road, and that doesn't include Westbridge. We have Wildwood.
Yeah, thirty seven.
Okay, all right, well, you get my point. We have a lot more people than I think that we could use to land. I think we could buy a lane as a city, rather than buy the fire truck that's gonna take to put a fire out in the middle.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to address the commission? Step forward, say your name and address. We have five minutes to address the commission.
My name is Jeremy David, and I live at eight five five six Park Ridge. And forgive me, I don't feel very well, so if I pause or stutter, just give me a second. I've lived in this town since two thousand fifteen. My brother lived in this town a lot further before that. And I know you guys wanna plan on things, the big buildings downtown, let's build, maybe it is a green space, big, big, build a nice big pavilion. Have a skate park to attract the kids, they already skated there anyway. Build a park, leave it green, you're cluttering up the downtown. And only people only think you're the only reason you're doing it, you're after the money, you have the bills, how much you can charge for each one of those places, okay? People feel that way. So you care about the people or the money? Next thing about housing around town. And, you know, the big subdivisions, you know, the monstrosity that's going on, Jackson Vapor Road? That they now said, hey, we, we saw the great flu here and rain there. They saw it in the spring, they were back there, they knew it, they didn't tell anybody so they could continue. They told anybody they were stopping. Okay? That's how the game is played. And if you don't build any more subdivisions around town, build houses and ranches, build a whole subdivision of ranches. I'm disabled, can't get upstairs no more, can I'm going good? That's not possible. Three young state of, a disabled vet got his legs blown off, serving our country. Hey, all we have is freaking two story homes everywhere in town, I'm sorry, and they're half million plus each. Had a conversation with my friend the other day. They're saying they like all these high priced homes in the area because it keeps the riffraff. Am I riffraff? Is that disabled vet, the hillbys riffraff? How about the elderly? How about handy families, the kids that have needs, have wheelchairs? How many handicapped people's wheelchairs do you think that's your fault? How many, really? You're building out for, and, and the kids in the town are pretentious. I know I have nephews that were raised here. They think people in Lockup Creek are low income because they don't own a home. Did you know every little single, one single unit in Lockup Creek is owned by elderly people who are single or have lost somebody? How about they low income? They don't need a home, that's where they need to work. You need to build homes, a subdivision, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand, to attract people who can afford that. Two to three hundred thousand dollar homes. If you wanna build a community, a diverse community of inclusivity and equity, that's how you do it. You don't keep building homes five to seven million dollars, and you know what everybody thinks every time you do? They're after the money. Don't care about the people. You just wanna be one of those rich neighborhoods outside Ann Arbor. With Shay. That is all not inclusive. And she got hooked up. And you're going to allow more projects like that to make you guys feel better? Because you guys got all this money, that's what rich people do. Instead of doing the right thing, you go right down the hall and put right down on people. Contact Tunnel Towers, say, hey, we'll build a subdivision of hundred ranches, all ranches. We would like to give, have the opportunity to tunnel towers, or give fifteen, twenty of those to people, our EMTs, firemen, policemen, veterans who actually need homes in this area. It was pathetic watching our parade, Memorial Day parade, how many few veterans were there? You don't have many in the neighborhood. Probably do that are able to walk, how many disabled? We all have to think about this, are you all about the money or about people? You gotta think about that. Because that's a, you know, I'm going to, I'm living by a house, four hundred fifty thousand. I can't find it nowhere in Dexter. You know, my friends said, you know why they don't do it? They don't want us looking like Flint, Ipsy, Saginaw. And is that what you? Is that what you guys want? I don't want to leave it there, just think about what you're doing, about the money, about the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to, is that what, your name and address?
My name is Lundy Agnes, I live at eight five five six Park Ridge in the Westbridge community. I'm against the building of the Pelham, and excuse me, I'm a little bit speaking. I, I wanna say that I moved here two years ago from Celine, which is a similar town, kind of that small town feeling. And I came to Dexter mainly for the Metro Parks, I like that area. I walked on this path probably every single day on my lunch break or after work, and I run this path. And this proposal, having these two buildings this close to the creek, completely changes the aesthetics. It's not compatible, and it's not what is in the area. Despite this diagram of the building being similar in height to the library and to the downtown, the things that those buildings, as they're set back further. There's land in the area, they're not so in your face that when you come down, you run and you walk. You look over, and these buildings are gonna be just barely back off the creek. This is an area that has flooding, and those trees in that brush in that area stop the erosion, we know that. You're gonna tear them down, put rocks up, and then you have this whole aesthetic thing when you go running every day. This place of quiet, which is already noisy from the traffic, from the trains, from downtown. Now we're gonna put all these condos together. So when I'm running or walking, or all of us in Dexter are in this area, this is what we see. We look at people on the balconies, we hear their noises, if their radios are going, if they're smoking, if they're out, they're, you know, fishing, or just going down with the creek. And what kind of damage will this do over time? What kind of erosion happens when you hang up trees and you change the aesthetics? This is a park for everybody, where our children hide, where we go. Building on this area might have been something great in the past, where you have, you know, a sports center or condos or something. But like, she put over here, all these neighborhoods are going in, high density, everything else, and the traffic's horrible. Today, driving my kids to school, if you leave at a certain time, and you don't, if you miss that window, they're ten minutes late already. It's backed up, you can't go, the buses are there, you can't go under that barrier, it's a blind lane. And we're looking at a parcel that's just a triangle. Not only aesthetically, it's horrible, but we know it's congested. Even if you put a turner on there, it's just gonna get even, it's the worst bottleneck in the city. You can't go, you're gonna be late, and we have to drive this every single day. So that's the main thing, that, the, the two main reasons why it should never even be zoned to live there. I agree with what the, the two former residents say, this should have always been a green space. It should have never been a building. If this decision goes through, you look in the future, and you look at what people are gonna say, it's always what you've been mistaken. That bridge is always going to stay put, it's historic. Every time you come through Dexter, Roughshower, everything else, it's gotta be bottleneck, it's gonna have more congestion and more noise. Not to mention, who wants to live right there, right at the creek? There's foot traffic, that area is dangerous. If people start crossing the street, walking their dogs, whatever, making turns, going anywhere, it's just a nightmare. So I'm asking the, the planning commission, the council, to really think about this decision and what the impact will be. Every single day when you go to the park, you wanna see green space. You don't want this high density thing, and I'm not against development. I understand Ann Arbor is booming, I understand that this is the area, and this is the spillage from that. But Dexter so far has been, it's done a good job when you look at, I, I don't mind Mill Creek Fox in that area, or even down, I think it's called Grand Commons. It's set back, it's beautiful, they have a walkway coming up, this is, so no matter what, even if the building is similar, it's in your face, it's not a good area to build. Thank you for listening.
Anybody else that would like to address the commission? Please step forward.
My name is about Chamberlain, and I live at seventeen oh one Baker Road. Well, she people know me here, I'm not really, really excited about this whole traffic. By the way, did everybody know the, the guy that, getting in tonight about three hours ago? Well, actually, I was behind it, and the dude backed up all the way up, all of a sudden get out of it. So you don't really stop and think about what you're really doing. It is about the money. It is about, oh, let's get the top dollar. My kid works for this city, and he can't even afford to live in this town. Because there is nothing here, nothing. My doctor, my chiropractor, which makes really good money, he can't even afford to live here. And he got a, a, like, ah, already is, whoa. The death house around you. Why don't you go around and fix up some of these dumps that are all in forests? Where, every single row in Dexter's got a dump. You guys don't go after them, you just empty. You want to, you know what, we don't want to be the harrassy people. I'm sorry, that's not really where, where we all came from. And you can think this little building isn't gonna, and what about the sinkhole there? Isn't there a sinkhole involved in this thing? Huh? And all the money we spent on this stupid fire hall? Look at how, how many years have we been fighting? And guess what, we're just going back to plan A. Millions of dollars spent on researching and doing this, and as soon as your cousin dies, that sign came down. And guess what, they ain't playing the fire, we're just gonna be there no more. No, no, we're gonna move it back into our, our, hey, by the way, there won't be a playground back there, because where are you gonna put the fire hall? Where the park is? You guys are just ruining it all. That you might have been building, we were never supposed to notice, well, it's noticeable. I hate to tell you, the building behind the condos, they're noticeable, hate to say that. How come you condemned Gary's property to the property, and now you can build condos on it? You guys are just a joke. Everything is about the money, the almighty money of Dexter. You want Ann Arbor, you want, you want Bloomfield Hills, you want, go back. Friends, and go back to where you came from, because this is not what we want. Nobody, and you, you're gonna kill the businesses in Dexter, you're gonna kill us, trying to get out of there, it can lead you out. It's a joke. You can't even get out, you can't even turn when you get down there. You can't turn and go under the fire, like, must shake your own life and your own heat and zip up and fuck us up, and you go, oop, sorry, I wanna go, I'm headed home. This is stupid. You guys are not even thinking about what impact is gonna happen to Dexter. And how long is the poor businesses, go and talk to Ian, we'll talk to Ian at Hatties. This is doing him a hell of a good deal, you guys, because you know what people do? They drive right through our van, and then they go ask for it, you know where to park here, I'm just gonna go out to Lowe's or Menards, that's got an entire park you mind. Right? I mean, who doesn't? You guys don't shop at Hatties, I'm sure. Y'all go to Menards or Lowe's. It's ridiculous, and you guys are all ridiculous if you don't think this is ridiculous, including you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that would like to address the commission?
Hi, I'm Philip Hoffman, I live at eight five five six Park Ridge. And I just moved here a couple years ago from Ann Arbor, spent several decades there. And one of the main reasons I moved here with my family is because of urban density that was happening all around me in Ann Arbor. I wanted some space for me and my kids, I wanted to be closer to the metro park. I grew up in Northern Michigan, was used to having a yard and neighbors. And again, that just wasn't possible anymore in Ann Arbor. And that's why, you know, there are appropriate spaces for appropriate buildings, and there's appropriate kinds of density, and that's not. First of all, it will change forever the character of the surrounding area. Putting these massive buildings in that space, it will destroy the creekside environment, removing those trees. It will impact the, the park and all the trail system there in a negative way. Except for those few people who have the money to buy those units. And units themselves, again, the, that's what they're gonna hear, you know, several times a day. And the structures are too big, they're too tall, they don't fit in with the area, they don't fit in even with the mission of Dexter. Right? And again, they definitely don't fit in for the reasons I moved here. To have this space to enjoy this balance between what we build and what nature has built. To be able to recreate in a way where we don't feel approached upon. I live on the north side of Ann Arbor, right down by the river. And again, there's smart kinds of development, and then there's other kinds of development, again, like the Pelham project, that not only don't they make sense, but the kind of compromises that we're talking about. They don't benefit the community overall. The fifty six cars, again, I just talked about that traffic, it's already crazy, trying to get in and out of there, a roundabout. Again, roundabouts can do a lot of things, but when you have this number of cars and only increasing traffic from outside development happening in, outside Dexter. It's really difficult, if not impossible, to get through there. And that's not gonna change, the bridge situation isn't gonna change, and adding these new cars to the area is, again, another reason why it doesn't work in that space, shouldn't be used for this purpose. The structure itself, again, if you're gonna build this thing, which might happen regardless of what we have to say about it, is too tall and it's too close to the bank. And again, chopping down all those trees that have taken, you know, longer than any of us have been alive to grow there and stabilize that area. It's, again, just, just a bad idea. The, the density, again, I don't think is necessarily the problem, again, it's where it's putting the dispositions. The space is inappropriate space, and again, putting something there like, you know, a green space or an addition to a park. And even if it's a parking lot, right, Dexter needs some more places for people to park. And related to parking, if you have guests, there's no guest parking, there's no place for these people to park. So where they gonna park, are they gonna park up by the library, they're gonna park in all these spaces that we already don't have enough of? And they're gonna take away the parking for the community if a guest wants to visit anyone who lives at this particular place, built as the specs show right now. So, again, I just think I moved here for a certain reason, and, you know, that included the kind of density and urbanization that's happening in Ann Arbor. I feel like Dexter is a very sensible place with sensible people who can make decisions based on the information that's there and look to the future. Again, this is not something that we can, we can rewind once we move it forward, and it's about more than money, right? These things are gonna outlast us, just like those trees that we're gonna cut down in order to build this building. So be thinking about that, and not only us and our children, but our children's children, and what's gonna be there once we're not here anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to address the commission? Please step forward, say your name and address. I'm seeing anyone hurt, then is there anyone online that would like to raise your hand, speak to this, or really any other issue for planning commission?
I don't have any.
No, but, okay. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to old business. First item on old business, the Pelham preliminary site plan review. Yes, with this, we'll probably, we're gonna have staff presentation, and Michelle, do we wanna have? Do you wanna go, usually? you wanna go, usually you tell people last and wrap it up, so.
Yeah, I'll go last and wrap it up. We'll start with, um.
Okay, let's start with Megan. Okay, Megan, take it away, please.
Good evening, Megan Nassiminoff with Carlisle Workman. We are the city's planning consultants. Um, in our packet, you, in your packet, you've had our, um, view. I just wanna hit a few highlights of it, um, and then go through. Um, so as you're aware, with being proposed to buildings, fourteen units. Um, those units are two, three bedrooms. The applicant is proposing to loop the existing water main over eleven hundred millennial feet to allow city water to be accessible to the site and to other sites nearby. Um, that is, wanna stress that, that one of the reasons to look at this in the P U D because that would be possibly, that could be looked at as a public good underneath the ordinance. And also that this is a really neat site. Um, I know that's been in front of the commission multiple times, but, um, just wanna emphasize it's triangular shape. The topography from moving from the train and basement down to the flat, then more topography going down to Mill Creek. Um, it's also at one of the busiest intersections in the city. Um, in addition, it is a property that's been cleaned up from contamination, so it's a great, great field site. All these things factor into it being a difficult place to develop. Um, and then also being a candidate for the unit development. Um, there's a number of changes that have been made. Um, they were listed in the staff report, but I just wanted to highlight a few. Number one, that we're pertinent to our reviews before. We've always talked about the basing and that the basing should be the building that's, the first stage should be the building that's closest to the road. And then the building that's in the rear, be built second. The applicant changed their basing program to do exactly that. Um, also, they moved both buildings back from the embankment before they were placed either right on or even forging into where the embankments started to go down. One building is, um, is much further away from those and the others just have a, a corner that's just barely touching where the topography starts to go down. Um, the public area that adjacent to Mill Creek, so between Mill Creek and the buildings, um, has been enhanced with additional steps, handrails, pathways, um, and benches. So one of the directions, I think, from the planning commission the last time was to have that space be a park-like place. Um, and essentially make it more of a, trying to, that's probably make it more of a mirror of Mill Creek process. Uh, uh, across the, uh, the park, across the way. Um, there's a fire access lane at the rear of the building and site is being expanded. There's been, um, proposed retaining walls for the embankment. And the landscaping plan, um, has been updated with more plantings and preserved trees as well as more detail on the landscaping restoration of the creek, uh, of the creek shoreline. In our report, we list again the goals and objectives that the, um, are relevant to this. To this proposal. Um, going on to page eleven of our report, which is on page fifty-seven of your packet, wanted to highlight for you the waivers, um, that you would need to make a determination of and you were recommending approval of this. Um, because they moved the building away from the Mill Creek, um, it now is encroaching into the front setback. So there's a, be a front setback deviation. Um, the front buildout deviation, a clapped ground for height and, and probably most significantly of those waivers would be the building height. Um, and the building height is one story and then, and a number of feet. Um, so it's not as significant as maybe some other things that you've seen were even as significant as was previously. In terms of traffic impact, the Washington County, um, Washington County Road Commission's plan hit, has done a, there's a, will be a traffic impact study. I know that's gonna concern, um, drought. Also, in terms of site access and circulation, um, you will, again, if you were looking to give a recommendation, um, have to give a waiver on the sidewalk from the street frontage. It's supposed to go all the way, um, across, but it really doesn't make sense. At the driving, you discussed that the last time. Um, also, for the sidewalk. Um, so that people could get from one place in the, the site to the other, especially if they're going from building to building or looking to go from a building down to the, um, open space, um, that's in the creekside yard. Um, in terms of parking, um, the maximum number of parking spaces is forty-three. They're proposing fifty-three. Um, majority of those, um, fifty of those are inside buildings in the first floor. So, um, there don't have the visible impact that a fifty-three parking space, um, uh, fifty-three space parking lot would, um, but it still is over the maximum. So, um, you would need to waive that. If you, again, were looking to recommend this, um, the applicant stated in the letter, um, dated October second, that those additional spaces were needed in order to add a lot of accommodations, including services, maintenance, service work, package deliveries and guests who wouldn't have access to those parking garage spaces that are working on the first floors of the buildings. Um, in terms of landscaping, um, this is a difficult site to evaluate in some way. Um, it's a natural candidate for some waivers because of the topography. Technically, there's supposed to be a very, um, enhanced buffer in between this site and the single-family residential. However, there's the train and basement in between those two. Also, there is the topography to think about in the preservation of the Mill Creek, um, the, the, the Mill Creek banks. So when you're looking at this, you should look at what is, is what are they proposing above and beyond? What is required even when there is a waiver that's being asked for? And does this meet the design excellence that you're, that you expect from a planning development? Because in any planning unit development, you're at, the developer is usually asking for some acceptance through the rules. And in return, the city is looking for something above and beyond that that would happen under a tradition, uh, under something that combined with zoning. Um, one of the things we flagged in our previous reviews was about the Mill Creek Bank plant, planting. And what they proposed meets, um, according to our landscape architects have what we have asked for in our previous review. However, we wanted to emphasize that it's critical to include a cover crop to help stabilize that creek bank and the growth of prairie plants. And that can take up to two to three years. So due to the nature of that, we strongly suggest that the applicant retain someone who specializes in prairie planning to ensure that this person, portion of the property is properly planted and maintained. Um, we also recommended that a few larger tree trees would go, go, we've been beating heights, I could add it to that yard facing the Mill Creek. Um, the dumpster was moved in enclosure, or, was moved to a less visible location per discussion. However, um, the, it's in a proposed required side yard. I'm gonna excuse myself. And apologize. I'm sorry. Um, and then, um, so you as the planning commission, we need to, I'll give you a waiver that we need to, um, recommend as part of any recommendation. There are waivers in terms of architecture, the primary building entrances, the maximum uninterrupted to the thud. Um, those two still stand in terms of our review. Um, and those we've articulated before would be appropriate based on that this is a different type of building that was anticipated by the zoning ordinance due to the first floor parking within the building. Um, in terms of the first floor transparency and the second floor transparency, we, we raised some questions about that in our review. Applicants submitted some additional figures and they, they, they do meet the requirements. Um, in terms of P U D qualifications, wanted to emphasize again to you what those qualifications that we have flagged in our review were, were. Number one, that is the redelvement of a gray field site. So I use a site that had contamination from the shooting range that was there um, and has been cleaned up. Um, landscaping beyond the site plan requirements. Um, the property, again, with the difficult site condi- condition due to partial topography and abutting railroad embankment. Um, mitigation of offsite impacts on public and, public facilities by bringing city water to the site. And then significant use of sustainable and site design features, including, including rain gardens and other low impact, um, stormwater. Um, when you, then if you look through our review, there's a number of other, um, standards. And basically, when you ready, you would see that we would said, we said all of them were met except for one. Um, and that's I have H. The proposed P U D shall not result in unreasonable negative environmental impact or loss of historic structure zone site. Um, and we feel that that standard can be that improper care is proposed for the creek bank. The other item to note is item J in terms of standards, that the proposed use or usage shall be of a location, such location size, density and character to be in harmony with the zoning district and the city of Dexter master plan and shall not be detrimental to adjoining districts. So, um, we feel that the proposed use can be in harmony with the zoning district master plan and not detrimental to those adjoining districts. However, we recognize that any development of the site will impact those adjoining districts due to the public nature of the site. Um, that is across from Mill Creek and it's at the busiest intersection of the city of Dexter. For tonight, and throughout this process, there have been a lot of people who have expressed what those impacts are. It's one of your decisions tonight to look at that standard and thoroughly evaluate it. In terms of the project density, um, density bonus is not being asked for as a height requirement that is asked to be waived. Um, also in terms of looking at P U D open space regulations, natural features and resources protection. That, you, when, in our previous reviews, we really talked a lot about the Mill Creek Bank stabilization in terms of that. But we build, the applicant has taken appropriate measures to direct our concerns to this extent. Um, and then however, the planning commission should determine whether the P U D has proposed with the natural feature productions for P U D or for the law. In terms of our recommendations, um, we have asked the applicant to provide the first floor transparency calculations, which they did. Um, and we also recommended that a landscape plan, um, with an updated, um, landscaping cable be provided. That if this project moved forward to be provided at final site plan, um, we also, um, we know the planning commission, if you choose to make a recommendation, should include determinations on appropriate project density and whether the preliminary P U D, the qualifications and criteria of zoning ordinance for P U D. Um, we also recommend that the following conditions be attached to any recommendation of approval to the city. One, the crosswalks are proposed connecting the parking lot system throughout the parking lot to the trail and how an open space between the building. Um, and then as the bachelor's then, uh, prairie planting care is hired by the applicant during the installation of landscaping on and nearby. Thanks to Mill Creek to ensure that this portion of the site is properly planted. Um, in our review, we have a list of banners, but the list that has come from, um, this annual is much more accurate and should be at part of any motion. Thank you.
Thank you. We may have some questions, but we'll call it out a little bit later. Thank you, Marcus.
Good evening, Marcus back around the way, Jim. Um, I don't have too much to add to that. Megan touched on, uh, most of the infrastructure, um, points. Um, so at the preliminary stage, really, what we're looking at from an engineering perspective is, it is sufficient infrastructure in place to support development. And if not, are they including what's necessary with their proposal? And, and it's been touched on, but, uh, they are proposing, um, to connect the water mainline frontage from the line out of East Ridge, which, uh, will improve redundancy of the city system at large, but also, um, that allows them to bring higher end of the site fire coverage, uh, in building services. So that's, um, that one addressed, uh, sanitary sewer is available. Um, along the frontage, the orientation's a little bit off. And when the roundabout project comes, some metal, they're gonna need to be moved around, uh, to provide the city access without, uh, blocking the intersection. Uh, so we've worked with the developers engineer, how the details that they have, that'll get refined with their knowledge and they need to, uh, actually add a little bit of public sewer, um, so that they have a connection point outside of the existing and future intersection. Uh, store owners want to address, they, they do have a mix of, uh, rain gardens, uh, some, uh, storage, all this guy's piping. And, uh, are re- uh, releasing the creek to reduce rate to mitigate the back at the site call from near Brandler or Ass to pay services. And the, uh, last thing I'll mention is the traffic, uh, so that is, that does need more investigation. The applicant is, in their response letter has said that they intend to move through that process with Washington County. Um, with the traffic impact study and whatever comes out of that, that needs to be done to, um, for the county requirements. Um, so, so they're looking to, um, move forward with that. Uh, following, uh, if, if they were to get preliminary approval and they'll do that work. Uh, to accommodate that. So, um, there's a few other things that Megan mentioned with the connectivity, the testing connectivity. We grew all those, those are good suggestions. Um, that's really what I have. So if you're on for this question, with, uh, overall, from an engineering perspective, they have acknowledged everything that needs to be done to accommodate the, the development.
Thank you.
The applicant will make their presentation and I'll wrap it up.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Now, yeah, would you like to, uh, have a presentation?
Yes. Okay. Michelle, can we present on the screen? Do you have the, um, the rendering? Michelle, maybe you don't mind bringing up the easel. Perfect, thank you, sweetie. Okay, good evening. Uh, first of all, we appreciate the planning commission's time, uh, and consideration and the community for coming out as well. Um, both positive and negative comments help shape our project and help it become a better project. So hopefully we can also address a lot of the concerns that, uh, folks have tonight. Um, and some of the things that, that have been said by Megan, but, um, also by our team. I'd just like to quickly introduce our team tonight. So the development team consists of myself, Joshua Bloom, with a company called Bloom General Contracting. We're commercial builders. Um, we've been around for forty years around Washington County. We've built in Dexter before. La Fontaine Chevrolet was one of our projects. Um, this is Kelly Anderson with KLA Development. She's a residential home builder in Washington County, uh, custom home building. This is Jeff Mahaney with Mahaney Architecture. Um, he does architecture both in Washington County, um, and also other states. Um, with us tonight as well, we have Joe Maynard with Washington Engineering. He's our civil engineer. Uh, we have Shane Burley and Adam Conversmuth, the Studio Detroit Architects. Um, we have as well Jerry Sisnowski, uh, who is our landscape architect. And he'll speak in a little bit about Mill Creek specifically. Um, as Megan mentioned, this is a very difficult site for redevelopment. You guys know this, you guys have experienced this for many years. Projects have come to the table here and have not made it. Um, as, again, I'm gonna repeat a couple of things that Megan said, but, um, it, the shape of the parcel, uh, the fact that it's a gray field, there's blight, um, there was blight on the site. It's right next to a railroad. There's no water to the site. All of these present unique challenges, uh, for redevelopment of the site. What we've come up with truly is the best use case for redevelopment of this site. Commercial development, like buried, has come and not been able to work for a variety of reasons, which I'll touch on. Industrial makes zero sense in this location being in the village corridor. And what we're proposing, let's be honest, these are beautiful buildings. Okay. I've heard a lot of negativity about this project, which I can understand from different viewpoints, but what we're proposing is a beautiful redevelopment of an urban area. Okay, so we will touch on that more, but just wanna cite that as I go through some of the concerns. So traffic impact, Carla Warman did a a rough assessment of traffic uh conditions. And the based on that, a condominium development will actually be one of the lowest traffic impact of a redevelopment for this site. A brewery would generate many more traffic impacts um per day than what we're proposing. Further, what we're proposing actually adds the walkability of downtown. The folks that live here are going to be in walking distance of downtown, be able to walk and support local businesses, which is a great thing. We actually reached out um and had over ten community letters of support for this project from many local businesses, which I believe Michelle has shared with you, but because we've heard from many community members, I want to share a couple of those today just to help you understand some of the letters and um positions that people have. So erratic death and Brian Stroger. To whom it may concern, we would like to voice our support of added housing at eight one eight zero Main Street. The design concept proposed for the Pelham ties into the history of the area, preserves the waterbank waterfront bank and its trees and is environmentally conscious. The development will provide more housing downtown to serve the growing demand and will align with the city of Dexter's master plan. For walkable downtown, we love to see our community thriving and key elements of that are a balance of healthy commercial businesses along with the thoughtfully incorporated housing to support downtown community. Three birds, Laura Keever. These are businesses that I'm sure you all know and love. As a resident and business owner in Dexter, I personally like the idea of more housing, especially condos, as there's little land available to build additional homes. We have invested in our schools and amenities and engaged and measured responsible growth, so it is no surprise that people wish to live in Dexter. This development would increase downtown foot traffic, which is essential to attract retailers and restaurants, which are in turn critical to a vibrant downtown. The Pelham site has so many challenges for development and there have been so many iterations. I am concerned it will sit vacant if this proposal fails. It's impossible to please everyone, so I'm hoping that the greater good and balance will be determined. Pelham really seems like a win if it's done well. That's Laura Keever. I'll just read one more. This is from Chuck Manitz, who has been a longtime Dexter residence. Uh I know his company called Doors and drawers in town. Our family owns and operates a manufacturing facility in the Dexter business park. Over the length of our company's history, we have witnessed firsthand the growth of Dexter community. I believe the Pelham project will be a positive development for the area and landscape. The care and thoughtfulness that went into designing this building is well displayed throughout the renderers. And so I just want you to know that there is a lot of support that we have received in the community for this project. You know, small businesses and and towns like Dexter, it's critical to have, you know, customers and and a strong local community. And I think that the Pelham will will help support that. I think that's why a lot of these businesses wanna see it. There's nothing worse than going into small towns and seeing four leaves and four sale signs in your downtown area. And Dexter's a beautiful community. I want it to continue to to grow and just be a small part of it. So, you know, also, we we have received calls and inquiries into these condos and it's very interesting. So uh one of the calls we got was from a local Dexter resident um that's a little older and she's looking to downsize from her house. And this would actually allow many existing Dexter residents to stay in Dexter and continue to live in Dexter with lower maintenance. Uh these these will be eighty day accessible. There there will be elevators in them for people with disabilities. And what we found based on our experience uh on a recent project in Ann Arbor is that really our target demographic is those um those empty nesters that are, you know, looking to downsize, have lower maintenance, but aren't yet ready to go into senior living uh, you know, somewhere else. They wanna stay in Dexter. They wanna walk downtown. That really is the target of this project. So with that, uh I wanna touch on some key critical points about building height because lots been said about height and I wanna just get factual to address these issues. So I wanna bring up uh Shane Burley just for a moment. Uh he's our architect on the project to touch on some of the heights and how we got here a little bit.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Uh Shane Burley is studio director. That's in my address. Hi, no, it's okay. Perfect. We've been working on this for about six months now, right? Listening to preliminary P U B feedback and central P U B feedback, rhythm feedback as well. But we've also been on site and verifying heights of these buildings that are within the area. Take with the graphic here, they have probably above sea level. Um, you can see the Pelham is eight ninety eight as proposed. Um, if you go to the east, you have been the fire department eighty seven one, uh the district library nine oh two. The Jeffords project is at nine oh eight and then it drops back down. Heading west, we have the train bridge at about eight sixty three. And then the average tree heights that are existing right now are nine thirty eight. And then we get to the uh excuse us, the Westbridge. And uh those range anywhere from, you know, eight seven or eight eighty to eight eighty eight. And I point that out just because, you know, we are dealing with the power fade and we do have that dip and rise of grand bridge. And I do understand, you know, the adjacency to a residential neighborhood. You know, calculating distances, our project is about three hundred fifty feet from that neighborhood. You you do have the tree height at nine thirty eight. And, you know, again, the Pelham, we redesigned this. We've gone back. We removed units. We sunk in these buildings into the ground. Um, we are at forty seven feet from ready to the top of the building. And I just also wanna point out, you know, that forty seven feet is the top of the parapet. And uh, you know, I I believe strongly, you know, this design, as it's evolved, is a very contextual for Dexter. You know, I feel like this is uh harkening back to the engineering days, um of which, you know, the project is named after. But I also feel, you know, these aren't flashy buildings. These aren't modern glass structures that look like they belong in in our. These are, you know, brick stone. These have a little bit of a contextual feeling of, you know, harking back in that industrial era. So forty seven feet to top of parapet. Um, we do deviate our parapet. We do go up and down so it's not flat across. I mean, you need to give these structures, you know, a little bit of so we're down to four stories. Uh the first part floor parking is underground. Um, we've managed to, you know, via um start planning and working with a civil engineer, be able to get access around that site, utilizing the grading, uh enter underground store or parking. And then you have that first floor walkout onto the Mill Creek. And, you know, this energy that we're designing, we have just paid for this, you know. This is, you know, working with the landscape architect, working with the civil engineer. This is the vision, you know. Tree species, plant species, I'm sure you guys have talked about that. Landscape architect comes up and civil engineers. But, you know, we believe this is a high quality design. And, you know, we believe that this does fit within Dexter. We do, we are lower than many other buildings adjacent. Uh, we do have string, you know, we do have distance from the neighborhood. We do redesign and really elevate that creep.
So just to just add on to a couple of items that Shane said, the height, the height of the building is forty seven feet and the, I think the max height is forty five feet. So what, you know, before, in previous iterations, we were at fifty seven feet. We've, we've dropped the building out of forty seven and are asking for a two foot uh variance request on the max height. Um, from the the view from downtown, as Shane said, because we dropped the garage into the ground, this looks like a four story building. This is no longer looking like a five story building. The garage will will be down in the ground. That is a game changer for some of the concerns. We we have listened closely over the past eight months and appreciate the planning commissions representing this this city well, in my opinion, um and getting us to continue to work to where we're at today. I'm very excited about uh the way it looks and the vision. So one of the items that is critical to us, oh, community benefits. So the water main, there currently is no water to this site. And one of the uh items that uh um is required for us to redevelop this is to um install eleven hundred linear feet of eight inch water main for the city of Dexter. This is an encumbrance on the developer and the project um that likely costs five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. This is not small. I've never had to put in eleven hundred linear feet of pipe for a private condo project. This is a serious investment that we are committed to doing uh for the city of Dexter. What that will do is add reliability and loop the water main up from Alpam Street to uh East Ridge. And that will provide additional reliability of the Westridge neighborhood's water supply. Just so everyone is clear on a major community benefit that is being proposed and that the developer is agreeing to do. As a part of another community benefit and a a key element of this project is Mill Creek. We we would not feel comfortable moving forward with this project if we if we cannot truly make sure that Mill Creek, we uh what we do there protects Mill Creek, the water quality, et cetera. So we have, I have Jerry Sisnowski here with us, who's our landscape architect and a specialist in uh uh river corridor restoration. And if you can pull up his slides, he's gonna speak to that because it's absolutely critical to us to address. Thank you, Jerry.
There was a question about experience of this year, Mark's uh forty years of being licensed to the state. But anyway, in those forty years, I've been working with a lot of natural features in a lot of places. And uh mostly prairies, rivers or in Canada, all the way down the U S, Texas to Massachusetts. We've had a lot of opportunity, seen a lot of things. Back in eighty seven, uh one of my projects was noticed by Lady Bird Johnson and she invited me down there. That was a nice thing, but what I learned from her was very important, I think, to everything I tried to implement. Back in eighty seven, I did a project, uh it was a steelcase prairie and there was so much interest public wise that uh that's probably thirty five years ago, I joined up with two botanists, geologists and myself in the form of Well Water Association Michigan. Still exists for public education of natural systems. If you could go to the next slide. So the first thing is uh river diagnosis. So to solve any kind of shoreline erosion, you need to understand the conditions and the river processes. And uh the assessment of what's happening on the land. Everything's, you know, every piece of land that butts the stream, the river is different. You have to have proper erosion control system. You have to have maintenance of those systems and you gotta impose landscape practices that are healthy for the river corridor. These two pictures are the site. And the bottom one was July and you can see all the vegetation there. And the top one was last week and you can see all the vegetation here without leaks, not a helping uh situation. And when you have unmanaged vegetation, um it leads to erosion of shoreline. It facilitates unnecessary nutrient loading. Sixty percent of phosphorus that gets into our water, it's from weeds, fall off of streets. It promotes invasiveness and it gets moved downstream and it destroys wildlife habitat. Next slide please. What's good is uh there's a reasonable amount of flow through Mill Creek at all seasons. And some term that you need to familiarize yourself with is ordinary high water. Both legal and uh the Corps of Engineers have jurisdiction of Mill Creek. And they'll always talk about ordinary high water. And what that is, is that bottom slide, you see that scouring of the shoreline? That's not the flood. That's ordinarily where the uh storm event water is and it scours the shoreline. The reason why that's so important to those agencies is that's what dictates what the river's doing over time. It's moving and that tells them where it is. So anything that you're doing along the river, you wanna do above that, Mark, you're coming in under that. Next slide please. Just overall on the same page. Tree species are directly associated with soil types. If you look at a map of Michigan, all soil types, you can dictate what forest types are on here. And then uh not all land cover was closed canopy forest. And trees, believe it or not, were not located along rivers. And we know this from two sources back in eighteen twenty where um original land survey was done. With notes, dope, and the other information is from Native tribes. They have a lot of knowledge about that. Just to talk about tree species here, I just put two examples. The Washington County wasn't forested. You look at the notes, it was prairie. It had some trees in it, some oak siveans. There were like only fourteen to fifteen to twenty trees per section of land. And you can see examples of that still. In Freedom Township, uh Ellsworth, there's a farm there that would look just like pre history time. There's another, the third largest oak tree is um in New York Township, it's off Willis. It's three hundred and twenty four years old. That tree was grown there, hundred and thirty nine years before the dolomoles go. Next slide. So the river corridor, land cover, again, is some wetness of prairie that prevents nutrients that flowing into the river. Keeping the quality, that top picture is the prairie with the river running through it and you see the grasses and whatnot. Bottom picture is your park. Looks pretty good. It's got that vegetation, not too many trees. Uh, next slide, next slide. So this is a real depleted site. In the far, the north corner, there's a few significant trees and we're saying all of them. Everything else is invasive or in bad shape. There's cottonwood there that's dead, looks big, but it they calber up very fast. There's um you have a, that's, you do anything, get rid of that black thorn, that's poisonous. Black locust was all that stuff that was shown up in that picture, poison ivy and other things. The landscape plans that we're proposing were getting back to this river corridor. Plant material, hamwood, shingle, like shingle hooks, you don't find very much. In fact, Washington County, there's only two rivers where they exist and one of them is right here in Mill Creek. I followed it up by Marshall World. It's an erode. The on-site stormwater that's being proposed, it removes the solid oils and floating pollution and stores water till it can be metered out into the, next slide. This is just a generic diagram of shoreline. The areas and how we would deal with them. Again, it's that ordinary high water that's Again, it's that ordinary high water, it's critical location on the stream. That's not the same as hundred-year flood foundation. Nothing's established. And the picture on the right is a project that I did just recently and we did a lot of stuff, but on the shoreline, you need to make sure, you can't just rip everything out and plant it back like you would in a yard and a subdivision. You gotta work with what's there. And the three areas you can see is at the bottom, green plants with plugs, blind plugs. And we adjusted the soil, got those in place. We brought the plugs up the shoreline, you can see they're not as well-established. Then at the top, that's seeded with blankets. So, we have to kind of work our way into a solution. Next slide, please. So, just in summary, the shoreline, you need to understand the conditions of the shoreline and that top picture, again, is the site. And there's that big cottonwood that we have picked all the way up, and and all the green stuff is black locust. Black locust is a real prolific cedar, and if it's not controlled, it just takes over. And there's not very much herbaceous mat down there, there's a lot of debris and whatnot. Sunlight can only penetrate three thicknesses of foliage. So, if you have a closed canopy, you're starving the ground plane from any plant material. And, you know, trees need what's on the ground too. So, that's an important thing to keep in mind. Prairie basses, forests, and sedges are deeply rooted. It's, in our investigation, we found that like a square meter surface in an established prairie, there's thirty miles of ridges, and that stuff goes down extremely deep, so it's going to hold eventually. And establishment, a species, you're multiple species of nature. So, what we've seen happening is we would come in there and basically hack off all that black locust. We're leaving the roots, we treat those roots. Then we go in and plant plugs and cover crops. When I say, I call them temporary temporary cover crops, that would be something like seed oats buried in the annual run. What we're trying to establish is a matrix that we can burn. Because you can treat things with chemicals, but the best thing for establishing tall grass prairie is fire, because you're beating back that wood plant material and you're enhancing the growth of those grasses, forests, and sedges. They need fire. So, that, then, so you're going to have three to five years of working this thing together. It won't look terrible during that time, but there's going to be active management on it. And then, the goal again is just to have that river corridor with grass and sediment. But there are no reply, and I think that's it. Yeah.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
So, as you can see, we, you know, we've assembled a team that's appropriate and committed to, one, restoring Mill Creek, which, as Jerry just showed you, has some serious issues. It has invasive species, it has erosion issues currently. So, we feel with, you know, our project, we're actually going to be contributing to the help of that river system at Mill Creek, which is very important to us and should be the community as well. I think that's pretty much all I have. I just want to say that, you know, over the past eight months of working on this, we've heard you, we've listened, we've tried to continue to refine and appreciate, you know, all the, you know, the process here, Michelle and everybody. And we're continuing, our team is, will continue to be committed to working with all agencies throughout this process. Eagle will be involved with Mill Creek, they'll be, will be involved with the road commission because of the roundabout. You know, we're committed to working with everybody to make sure this project is done correctly for the community. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. We might have some questions for you, or somebody associated with your group later, but we're not. I think that was your presentation, correct? Everything?
Thank you.
Okay, with that, Michelle, would you like to give us maybe a summary of the issues in your report, please?
Okay. So, you have my full report, and it's very detailed, but I don't think that I need to go over each and every little area. You have a brief explanation of the project. And just for the public, it's a multiple-family residential consisting of two four-story buildings, each having fourteen owner-occupied dwelling units, forty underground parking spaces, twenty pushable building, and sixteen service parking spaces. Title there, but there's a total of fifty-three parking spaces total. The applicant has provided you with an extensive presentation this evening. Excuse me. You have in your packet the preliminary site plan, the response letter by Washtenaw Engineering, the professional resume of Mr. Siznowski, elevations, renderings, prop sections, and then, of course, the different reviews from Carlisle Wardman, OHM, and DAFD. Both Mr. Root and Chief Armstrong are, they've provided you with a clean letter, but if you'd like to hear from him this evening, we can, we can have him speak at Brenda. I provided you with a summary of the public hearing and your recommendations to the applicant, and then just a summary of the changes to the plan. When it comes to the qualifications, this is the first step that the planning commission has to tackle this evening. And that is the determination of whether this project as proposed qualifies as a PUD. Both Carlisle Wardman and I, in our reviews, have gone over each of these for you and provided information to explain why we believe in our professional opinions, the project does qualify. When it comes to the recognizable and material benefits, out of a list of, I believe it's nine different criteria, a plan has to do three. They're providing what we believe are five. So, they more than, in our review, that, as far as the recognizable and material benefits of the project. The innovative design, everything from the architecture to the layout, to the landscaping, the storm, the stream management that they're proposing, would, in our opinion, satisfy the criteria. Unifying design elements, those include things like the landscaping, the pedestrian walkways, and the pathways. Long-term protection of natural features. As Marcus pointed out with the stormwater management, there's proposed marine gardens, preserved vegetation. And then, of course, you've got what Mr. Siznowski went over with you regarding these, the creek bank, the stream bank, I don't know how you want to classify it. Long-term protection of historic structures and significant architecture. There are no current buildings on the site. The closest you have is what you have in downtown. And more closely would be the Hellen Road by the dock. And the architecture, as the applicant has presented from the beginning of this project, is heavily influenced by that. So, you could say this criteria either isn't applicable, or they've done their best in a situation where there are no buildings that have historic nature. Section, excuse me, requires economy and efficiency of land use. You've heard multiple times this evening from the applicant and the consultants, the unique challenges with this site. The applicant has, or is proposing what's called missing the middle housing on this challenging site. The extension of the public water achieves economy and efficiency. And the use of land, not only, and you could have said this before, not only is it addressing a requirement for getting water to the site and providing sufficient pressure for the fire protection, as Mr. McNamee explained, it also provides redundancy within West Ridge that improves the system for the city. Harmony in public health, safety, and welfare. Excuse me, it's a residential development. The improvements that the applicant is proposing, those are the things that you'll be looking at for determining if it meets this criteria. Again, landscaping, the property of the streaming, all play into that. Proposed PUD, shall not unreasonably negatively impact the environment or any historic structures. You've already addressed historic structures. And as far as environmental impacts, based on the presentation that the applicant has made this evening, as well as the information on his plans, it will actually have a benefit to the environment and a positive impact on the environment, especially that associated with the Mill Creek beds. You've got the proposed PUD, shall not negatively impact, have a negative impact on surrounding properties. The extension of the public water main, again, both a requirement and a benefit, not just for the site, but for the adjacent properties in West Ridge. In response to concerns for nearby residents at the, the public hearing, the applicant provides the cross-section, so you have a good understanding of where the buildings fall in relation to one another, from measuring from above sea level. The perspective shows, or states that there's approximately three hundred and fifty feet between the homes and bridgeway. And I have had a conversation with the applicant, it's actually closer to about two hundred and fifty feet. So, you're still looking at two-plus football fields between the development, the first building, and the buildings within West Ridge. Excuse me. The other thing that this will have as far as a, a impact economically beneficial is on the downtown. There'll be foot traffic coming into the downtown. Are these buildings alone and the people living there, or do you solely support the downtown business? No, you already have a community existing. This will add to, to that by providing additional residents living in town. And it creates an even more vibrant and desirable downtown economy. The harmony with the zoning ordinance and master plan, both in staff review as well as Carlisle Wardman's, an extensive review of the zoning ordinance and the master plan. This proposed development is consistent and is in harmony with both of those documents. It's under single ownership, and it's not being done to certain, a process that the PUD is being used in order to be able to provide a quality development. So, you also have general provisions. Not all of the general provisions in section nineteen three are applicable. So, staff has gone through and identified the ones that are, as Ms. Minnick explained. Density, they don't need a density bonus. This has less density than the site, but it actually have for the master plan and zoning ordinance. But you still have to identify whether or not you build some appropriate density. The open space preservation, or open space and preservation of natural resources. I think I've gone on in nauseam, the creek bank stabilization, it's integral to meeting that. And I believe the applicant has done a good job of being able to explain that this evening. But there's also a backup system to that, and that is that the Department of Energy, Great Lakes Environment, Eagle has to evaluate this plan. They have to sign off on it, and they're not going to sign up on something that's going to be detrimental to Mill Creek. So, your deviations, we're getting down to the nuts and bolts in your potential motions. Your deviation determinations, if you determine that this, the project qualifies for PUD, then you're going to look at the determinations, the deviations. The front setback, as Ms. Minnick explained, it's a fifteen-foot required. The plan shows ten point one feet, but it actually is seven point six feet. That's the setback, because you've got an existing property boundary slash existing right-of-way. But the roundabout going in is going to require dedication of additional right-of-way. That's the dash line that's showing on the plan, if I remember correctly. And that's where the setback comes from, is that planned right-of-way. And since that road lane is under the control of Washtenaw County, it's the plan we're going to play by the county. So, that's a seven foot, seven point six foot setback. The front build-out, excuse me. Your front build-out, it would be allowing a forty-three percent build-out where seventy-five to ninety percent is required. Excuse me. The ground floor height, that's your first floor, and that by ordinance is required to be twelve feet, because you're looking at with a mixed-use district, having enough space for commercial. They're proposing a residential, all residential, and so that's one of the deviations, to allow eight feet versus twelve. The building height is, it's a four-story versus three stories. And it's a forty-seven foot height, as measured from grave level to the top of the pyramid. Sidewalk on the street front edge. They could put a sidewalk in, but it's a sidewalk to nowhere. There are no plans to go through the viaduct, oh, and beyond for a sidewalk. The connection for West Ridge to the downtown comes through the Mill Creek pathway. Parking, it's, as Ms. Minnick explained, fifty-three parking spaces on site, that includes the ones for underground. Excuse me, and the underground parking, it exceeds it's to allow fifty, I'm sorry, fifty-six parking spaces when the maximum is forty-three. The landscape plan, if you did net count of the landscaping provided, even taking away what they're asking for deviations, there's still an excess of what's required. But the planning commission will have to determine, excuse me, if you're comfortable allowing four street trees when seven to ten are required, twenty-three shrubs and no mixed-injury wall to screen the parking lot. Allow three preserved ornamental, three proposed ornamental trees, and two proposed evergreen trees, where twelve ornamentals and twelve empty trees are proposed. Allow the placement of the dumpster enclosure to be in the required side yard. They moved it from the required front yard, but in order for it to be functional, the required side yard was the only place that they could put it. A deviation to allow the the primary building entrance to front to the interior as opposed to Main Street, and to allow thirty-two feet of uninterrupted facade when thirty feet is required, and then to allow, well, you can take off, you don't have to worry about the transparency, because they've been able to verify that. You've been provided with a motion that takes you through the process of determining whether the preliminary site plan provides or does not provide a recognizable benefit. And then further goes on to determine whether the proposed PUD demonstrates or does not demonstrate compliance with the standards in the ordinance and qualifies or does not qualify for PUD. with the, with the standards in the ordinance and qualifies or does not qualify for P U D designation. And then goes on to determine whether the site plan meets or fails to meet the standards that you're required to compare this project to and whether it should be recommended for approval or denial. Starts off with the deviations and then goes in, if there are more deviations to discuss, then there are conditions of approval. And you can take off for slower transparency of the condition. Or it's a recommendation to post because you feel further information is required.
No, that's, well, there's a lot going on. So thank you. Okay, with that, it's time for the planning commission to do our job. So Michelle prepared very handily our, a great staff report here that kind of sunrises up our, the deviation determinations like you just went through as well as the waivers. It might be more efficient for us to cut all these deviations and the support. That was, that would be used, deviation and a determination used to whether or not we agree it should be a P U D. Both are all mentioned in the one motion. So I think rather than go through each and again, open for feedback from the commissioners, whether they go through necessarily each determination and each waiver. If somebody does make a motion, we can, that, that motion would include all of those and we can discuss if people want some of them removed or if there's issues with each one of that. So again, that would be kind of make the motion with these, the determinations and that, the waivers, and then we can, as a group, discuss which ones we may want to modify or bring open for suggestions, but I think probably in the nature of time, that may be the best, best way of going forward. So having said that is, is there a motion? Would there like to be a motion? Any questions? And again, I think with it, since the motion sheet is so long, I think we, we can reference refer back to this as, you know, reading the text, if somebody's going to make a motion, the the main text part that we can reference, rather than review each single determination underneath that, we can reference one through six in the staff report noted. As well as the deviations and then.
Now, since we're going to explain the process, how we usually make a motion to approve or deny, then we just.
Yes, well, that is true. So exactly. So really the, the nature of the commission is, thank you, it's basically just that. We make a motion, whether it's approval or deny, at least to start our discussion on that, doesn't necessarily mean that's the motion that's going to be approved. So we just need a motion really bad, something to discuss about. And pick apart basically. So with that, are you interested in making a motion?
That'll move motion number one in Michelle's report without going detail by detail essentially that we approve the project. And if anyone wants to second it, then we can discuss it either way. But basically that's a finding that provides the recognizable material benefits to be a P U D. And then we go through the standards.
And it qualifies for P U Ds. Exactly. Okay. So with that, there is a motion on for motion one for approval and joining the P U D W qualifications. Do we have support?
Support.
We're heeding. Okay. With that, we're in commission discussion.
Well, since it's my, I made a motion. Let's go through it. I think it's, given the attendance and given the controversy, it's best if we go through it bit by bit and I'll go through it as I see it. And feel free, anyone who feels strongly to interrupt me, we can just go into discussing point by point. First section is, provides the following recognizable material benefits. It lists five redevelopment of a gray field site in accordance with subsection D. Extensive landscaping beyond the site plan requirements. Property with difficult site condition due to shape of parcel, the topography and the budding railroad bank. Mitigation of offsite impact on public facilities through the extension and looping of public water main. And significant use of sustainable and site design features, including a rain garden. I don't have any issue with any of those. I think they're all correct.
Addition on negative approval of those, yes, can I?
I agree with those. I'd like to talk about the landscaping when we get through. The trade of long-term protection.
Yeah, agree.
Okay. The next section is, the planning commission further determines that the proposed P U D demonstrates compliance to the following standards and qualifies for P U D designation. One, innovative design elements, features including underground parking, rain garden. Preserve trees, extensive landscaping, and additional landscaping measures to stabilize the banks of Mill Creek and protect the water quality in the creek. Two, unifying, unifying design elements, including extensive landscaping, pedestrian walks and pathways. Three, long-term protection and preservation of natural resources and natural features by relocating the buildings away from the top of the bank and providing rain gardens, preserve vegetation and bank stabilization. Four, the name of the project, the Pelham, and the building architecture are influenced by the historic railroad viaduct and provides long-term protection of historic structures and significant architecture. I think this is one of the weaker known of the criteria, but it still is fine. Five, the extension of the public water main along with a missing middle housing product achieves economy and efficiency in the use of land, natural resources, energy, and the provision for public services and utilities, provides adequate housing employment and shopping opportunities, particularly suited to the needs of city residents. This is the most important factor to me. It's very important to the city to get the water main across the road. It's going to open up developing new Dexter and Chelsea Road. It's an expensive additional development step that the developer of this project is paying for. And it has significant material benefits to the city. We are going to develop up Chelsea Road because of that, sector Chelsea Road because of that water main. And it is a very big benefit. I don't know about this missing middle. Let's be honest, this is not a missing middle project. It's not a missing middle project at all. It's a wealthy project.
Don't confuse the missing middle in the architectural kind with the social phenomenon.
I don't agree with you.
Building typology is.
Yeah, it's the building typology. It's not the, it's not the other.
Yeah, I don't know if I agree with you either. I don't agree with you. The proposed seven, oh, six, extensive landscaping and creek bank stabilization is harmonious with public health, safety and welfare. Seven, the proposed P U D will not result in unreasonably negative economic impact upon surrounding properties. There is no evidence that multi-story, multiple-family housing developments such as the one proposed by the applicant would result in unreasonable negative economic output impact upon surrounding properties. Furthermore, the planning commission finds that residential development in downtown district such as the one proposed by the applicant, one generates constant flow of foot traffic to support nearby retailers, services, restaurants and other businesses. And two increases the amount of activity in the downtown, which in turn creates an even more vibrant downtown economy. I think this is an important factor. I think there's no question this is good for downtown. Beth, I love you. Your song has been a great influence on my voice as a wrestling coach. But I want you to know, I've been, I was attacking the hardware five times this weekend and it was, and it was once. And I think that.
All right. Well, sorry. It's not good engage the audience.
But I'll just say, I think this is going to bring a lot of people into downtown foot traffic. It's very good for the downtown economy. And that's why we have letters from a half dozen downtown business owners supporting this project. Eight, the extension of the public water main and residents living in the downtown will have a positive economic output impact on surrounding properties. Nine, the proposed multifamily development is harmonious with the village commercial zoning district and the city of Dexter master plan. Ten, the proposed P U D is under single ownership of Pelham LLC. Eleven, the P U D designation is not proposed to circumvent strict application of zoning standards, but rather to deal with the unique and unusual features and circumstances associated with the subject site, including location, shape, photography and access to the public water. It's another very important point. This is a challenging site, like this is a challenging site in a variety of ways. The developers' right from a traffic standpoint. This is a much less traffic intensive use than many of the other uses that have been discussed for the site. Twelve, the density proposed, twenty-eight multiple family dwelling units is appropriate for the subject site. On a per acre basis, this isn't one of the most dense property projects that we've approved. It's just not. You could look at other projects in town that on a per acre basis have been more intense. Thirteen, the proposed creek bank stabilization satisfies open space and preservation of natural resources and natural features requirements for P U D. About the presentation on creek, on the creek bank stabilization tonight was really valuable, really informative and, you know. Shows the commitment over a multi-year period to making sure that it's sustainable.
If, with that, can I, yeah, really quickly, so we want to come at that and then, sorry, gentlemen, you finish up with all your stuff.
Yeah, so I thought the presentation on the creek stabilization was very important too. One thing that I'd like to see if we can't agree to work into this or amend this motion, but the landscape plan says that they're going to warranty the plant for a period of two years. They do talk about management and maintenance and a program for this creek slope stabilization, but in the presentation, maybe it was just in the presentation that was discussed that it really takes three to five years for the creek bank to become stabilized. And from experience doing this on other projects myself, I agree that it's going to take a little bit longer for that. And I don't want that to become a burden of the people that are going to live there. I like that they're part of the development as a P U D. So I'd like to suggest that we modify that to say that the creek bank stabilization would be managed, would be installed and managed for a period of three to five years. As opposed to the requiring, what do you want to say?
Five or two, I don't know, I think three to five.
I think three are minimum for sure. And this is a big, seems to be one of the important features of the site. And for me, it's one of the important features of what I would approve of. So I would make sure that they look at that more and.
It would, I don't disagree with you. I understand exactly where you're going. What I would recommend that it would be a condition of approval because then I can make sure when we're going through final, if it gets to that point, that it gets baked into the P U D agreement. And not just like you would say, the master plan or the master D.
So I'm looking at you two as the right, we support this. So we'll take as friendly amendments to add a condition of approval that the landscaping on the bank has to be monitored and monitored, monitored for five years. And so do we have a second?
Is there any kind of inspection that would happen at this point where somebody actually confirms that everything was stabilized, that plan's having.
Question, do you accept that second amendment?
I think what I want to know is, is that, to be to add an exception.
When I think about this, it's the county that's going to look at soil and water control, right? But Carlyle Workman and their landscape department are going to be making sure the management and monitoring portion are taken care of.
I mean, especially if you hopefully have a component of this as well.
They may have important jobs.
So, right, right, I mean, it's making two inspections, but I think the best place for those is the annual instead of in the P U D agreement. So I think if you have those parameter, if you just have it as simple as you have right now and based on the instructions out of the U team, then those details can be hashed out as part of the P U D agreement, but I would agree that inspections would be essential.
So can I, sorry, really quickly, I want to ask the applicant or whoever feels comfortable to address this. You, you understand what we're getting at. Here again, I think one of the, and I echo that concerns, the, the presentation with and I think that one of your public benefits can, can be that, that creek, the, the restoration of that bank, which is now, as Mr. Southen point, now just chop full of invasives and junk that's spreading down the river and contaminating everything. So would you guys be willing to, I mean, we, we don't have exactly the details.
Yeah, I can, I can help here actually. So I, I just, I did a a development project in Ann Arbor Township over the past quarter or five years called Cornwall Farms. And what Ann Arbor Township required us to do was do a five-year maintenance bond on the value of the trees and then they inspected them, you know, at, at the five-year mark to, to release funds once they were satisfied with the plantings. So I would, I would say that, but again, I think what Carlyle Workman is saying is maybe all those details don't need to be put in at this point.
Right, they might not be, but I just wanted to gain your general acknowledgement that this, and you answered the question.
Yes, absolutely. We'd be committed to doing that.
Okay. And then also I think within, again, this is looking way beyond, but as somebody who's restored my yard slowly, slowly a much larger prairie, it needs a lot of maintenance. I mean, no weeds, as we know, okay. So I will look for you guys, it, it's only in the advantage, obviously you aren't living there long-term, but to build this into the homeowners association, those agreements and master deed that that area has to be maintained as well.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Especially if we're going into P U D this.
I, I think that, I think that with the Mill Creek, it would, I think it would still rest on the developer, actually, for five years, but we will, we will, we will. I, I hear your point. Well, for past the five years, for the HOA, we can write that in the master deed for maintenance of that, absolutely. For the first five years, I have a native species contractor that works with, with us on the detention ponds at this particular development, doing exactly what you're talking about. Every spring, a couple of times a year, making sure the weeds don't take over, making sure that the, the, the live plugs have a chance to establish, et cetera. It'd be a similar scenario that we would do for, for the five years.
Great, thank you. Okay. So I'm sorry, Karen, I think you had a question for Connor.
Well, I thought that presentation was excellent. I digress in the context that I really hadn't considered before about the, the, you know, bank preservation. One of the other sort of ways that landscaping has been used and it's been our traditional way of doing it has been screening. To create some kind of barrier between, or softening. Like, there might be applicable here. And the problem I haven't expressed at all, and I think they've addressed a lot of this, but is the fact that they, you know, like it or not, I'm part of the park. Just visually, there are people walk down that and look in that there. And that, that is, they're going to be, I understand that they're going to need minimal trees because that's a minimal, but why do space trees? Because that's a very feature. Which means the buildings are very busy and present. And you want to go on the park, you know, taking, climbing down the, you know, the trail. And I don't quite know what to do with that, but that's a concern.
Can I comment with your, your chance?
Yeah. Do you have, do you like a response to that then right now?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Jared, if you can go up and.
So when it comes to height, you know, we're really concerned about how do you soften that? Done a lot of work with my corporate facilities, it'll make more confinement outside and you know, like the deal that's been exposed. So we took all that history, experience and we brought it into the plant list here. And if you take a close look at that plant, it's very tall. So what, and even the ornamentals, we tried to treat away hedges, you know, they might be twenty-five feet tall, but they're a hedge in the scheme of things.
Can, can you just give them an example of the averaging species and how tall it will grow after like three years, five years?
So this one, right on the this probably is a good depiction of how tall it is when we plant that because we found that tree and it's thirty feet, it's probably caliber. So it's probably going to be up here when it's planted. And all these along here are, you know, tall species and on the backside, you know, what you're not seeing is what you're looking into. And there's a lot of the trees on the other side of these unit are quite tall. So we, when I was trying to do the plus, you know, get something up to this third level of windows with trees. Not a two and a half inch caliber, you know, you can drive by and can't detect it from fence pole.
Is that, you have another question? I can have a follow-up on that. So is it your, I mean, are you saying that
I can have a follow up on that. So is it your, I mean, are you saying that? These trees, which are they in this rendering or are they missing from the rendering or?
Well, everything that's in that rendering, uh both proposed and existing are from photos on site. I mean, that's what it really looks like. Um what I was commenting on is on the opposite side of the building, it should be the west side. There's a lot of trees there that are quite tall and like Michelle was mentioning, well, exceeded the quantities. But the reason for doing that was to soften it.
Let me ask you a question. So, don't go back yet. So this view that we have here, is it fair to say that this is an early view, not a final view?
Yes, it's an early view. That's what we see at construction.
And eventually you're saying there'll be trees up to the third floor.
Oh, yeah.
Covering the whole thing from the park?
These are tall, narrow, most of our evergreens.
What species is it?
Well, there's white pine, there's.
The tamarack is a large tree, right?
Yeah, and that's actually.
How about canopy trees? Are there any canopy trees as well?
There are on the opposite side. You know, we're trying to keep the canopy trees away from that shoreline because that's exactly what you don't. There you don't want.
How about, how about between that prairie strip and that walkway?
Or that is a fire dropped access. You could walk on it.
So I was kind of struggling with the fact that there wasn't anything like close to the park, all the tree wise. But then if you start looking at it, in my opinion, there are between seven and eight trees that happen between the walk. Or this fire access in the building and in both buildings case, right? There's been seven or eight trees. And then there are some trees as you, so if you're in the parking lot of the park looking over. You're going to see the bank, the prairie that establishes this walkway, and then you're going to have some trees in the buildings. And that happens from your view from the parking lot each way, that that I can tell on the plan. But as you get into the park and start going down the trail and you start crossing the the creek there. There's actually a number of trees that are proposed to be saved, one, two, three, seven, eight. Eight trees will be saved in the corner, nine, if you include another bigger tree, and then they're also planting that. So as you get into the park, there's going to be more vertical tree. Planting as you're participating in the path or kind of that green space on the opposite side of the path. So I think that in my opinion, that was there the future screen of the.
Anything that helps the site aesthetically, environmentally, the same.
I was going to comment later, but you might as well take down that, I think it's that Wayne Willow, you show us, show us being saved. That it's completely dead. Yeah, you guys show us.
From the time it was submitted, but you're right.
Cause I mean, you look all along that shoreline, which I've done a lot, and yeah, there's nothing, unfortunately, there's nothing really worth saving, even the large trees are dead. So.
The other thing I'd like to mention though, you know, you're talking about this management to get the shoreline going. Bear in mind that eagle, US Corps of Engineers. They're going to say what worked and what doesn't. You can have your people looking at it. Touching it, feeling it, having professionals out there, but they're going to tell you what can't stand.
Well, thank you. Okay, so um. There's no questions. Okay, I think that's not what I can do for now. Thank you. So I think now we can maybe concentrate on deviations. Jenny, you're such a great dog.
Deviations. A allows seven point six foot minimum front yard setback when a fifteen foot minimum front setback is required. I think Michelle explained why that's a reasonable deviation. I don't have any issue with that. Allow forty-three percent front build out and seventy-five percent to ninety percent is required. Again, it's a unique site. I think it's self-explanatory why that's a good deviation. Allow a ground floor height of eight feet when a minimum of twelve feet is required. Again, unique project. Underground parking, I don't think that uh that's unreasonable deviation. Allow maximum building height of forty-seven feet and four stories when a minimum of forty-five feet and three stories is required. Did I, what did I say?
It's because I wrote it wrong.
You want to correct it? Max, that's I get it now. Allow maximum building height of forty-seven feet and four stories when a maximum of forty-five feet and three stories are allowed. Allow partial sidewalk along the sites, main street frontage, when a sidewalk along the entire frontage is required. You're making this deviation because otherwise you would have a sidewalk that's the road or tracks.
Well, I have a question on that if I can interrupt. My only question, I I I do support the deviation despite pushing sidewalks everywhere in the city that I can, however, is there a rule? I mean, we don't necessarily know what's going to go on on Dexter Chelsea Road. So my point is, is there room within that right of way? Eventually, there might be a crosswalk there. The sidewalks typically include crosswalks.
Correct, yeah, and I know that that's that's something we talked with Watah County about. Um but it would be on the bridge side.
Okay, that's.
Both be on the opposite side.
Okay, so that's what I was thinking. So and and not rightly there, if they want, if if the sidewalk will go in there to do with the crosswalk. If they can fit it in there, because I know eventually we want more non-moralized paths to go around that to Chelsea.
If there are because of my website distance on that side of the intersection when you're coming under the bridge, I mean.
That logically, that makes sense to me, but I can't say that yes.
Uh thank you. All right, Jim.
Allow four tree trees when seven to ten are required.
Wait, I'm sorry, did you go to the parking?
Oh, I'm sorry. Allow fifty-six on-site parking spaces when the maximum allowed is forty-three. Very rare if anyone has to put more parking on site to really go.
I'm not supportive of it, however, in this case, the parking underneath it um obviously minimizes impervious surface. And and also I think that goes a little bit to that point earlier about the, I think the height. Parking underneath it, I think at least gives you that a little bit of two feet of extra height, because that's a huge benefit to have parking underneath that building. So exceeding the space again with, because there is no convenient onsite street parking right there, that should help with visitors. And I know it's there's two delivery spots too, so that's good.
Allow four street trees and seven to ten are required. Usually, we're going to make you do the street trees. Why are we on eleven corner?
I think it's the distance, right? But yeah.
We cut down on the scale, perceive the ability to soften it. Well, where do we need desperately these trees? So where we've talked about, I think they should rework the park side landscape plan to incorporate more large trees. Specifically, these seven or six missing trees.
Yeah, I can't, I can't agree with that after the presentation, just because the weeds are going to go in the river, which is bad for the river.
It's bad, there's a million trees, don't believe in the everywhere.
But I think that's better than we know, see a bunch of trees in our mill.
I mean, if you look at the restoration.
Thing that everybody's weighing out about is the big things like the local park and the thing that's going to fix that is they could pull oak trees.
Think we got to trust the landscape.
That's true, but I mean, I think, but that was the story of the rest of the street trees though. We would still have to grant the street tree whatever, you couldn't just put street trees over over there if that's what you're thinking. And I thought of rooms then. Right, normally I'm very good at trees as well, but I understand here, like it just can't fit.
H allow twenty-three shrubs and no masonry walls, a screened parking lot with a masonry wall, landscaping is required. Again, I think given the explanation, the layout of the site, this makes sense to me. I allow re-preserved ornamental trees, three proposed ornamental trees and two proposed evergreen trees. With twelve ornamental and twelve evergreens are required.
I just have a question on that.
I would bet a lot of money on that.
Yeah, because what, where? What is that, what area is that? Cause they're over the landscaping, I heard said.
Yeah, they're over, when you.
So what is the strict quantity?
Let me go back.
Yes, and then what exactly is? I. It's probably parking lot screen. Which. Doesn't seem to fit anything.
It is, oh no, this is the adjacent to the single family residential.
Oh, the buffer. Okay, so this. So this is for that that buffer, which again, given that vegetation, okay, thank you. So yeah, so Jim, sorry, thank you for interrupting, but.
No, that's, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Allow a placement of dumpster enclosure in the required side yard, a location in the rear or non-required side yard is required. I I think it's very difficult to think of this site in that context because it's such a unique site, so I don't have an issue with that.
Thank you for moving it.
Yeah, thank you for moving it. It's much better in this location. Uh allow the primary building entrances to front the interior of the site when primary entrance is required to front a public road. Uh for this site, for this project, this is a very good condition. Allow thirty-two feet of uninterrupted building beside or a maximum thirty feet is required. Any issue? And allow nineteen percent second.
So that's, you can take that one out.
Which brings us to, well, before we go to conditions, I need further discussion of deviations.
Again, again, I'll just add that typically, I I know I'm I'm very adverse to granting a lot of uh deviations. Given we just redid our zoning ordinance and this is a site within the downtown, however, if any site calls out for it, it it's this, which. I I think is, when you went through the explanation, I don't think there'd be much other way to design any, many buildings on here that meet all of our requirements. Because our requirements are more men, well, for that would apply here, I meant for like a downtown building form, which can't work here. So I think that that's why I'm comfortable with the, with the way, or the deviations waivers as we call it.
And as far as the height goes, one of the things that I was looking at is the master plan, and the master plan does allow for three to five story. Buildings and village commercial zone. It is a deviation from the existing zoning, but maybe not from the master.
Very important.
Additional thoughts? Um okay, uh Jim, I guess the, or the conditions?
Conditions, um A, crosswalks connecting parking lot sidewalk system. Through the parking lot into the trail and the common area space between buildings shall be provided on revised plan. First floor transparency shall be.
That's gone.
Staff review dated November one, twenty twenty-three, C W A review dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. O H M review dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. D A F D review dated October sixteen, twenty twenty-three. And the additional condition that Allison and I have previously amended the motion to include. Which would be monitoring all of the rivers, slope area landscaping for five years. And after further discussion, we'd like to add that bond that the previous discussion.
Thank you, Jim. So again, we've had some, we're still, one, one thing I did want to um ask a clarification question or or just make sure everybody's aware. Michelle and um and basically the landscape plan details, really, we're seeing them now, but isn't that, that's a fine site plan, correct?
Correct, it was every fine one.
So again, I I there the the comments that, and I think we have a lot more information than we typically have for a preliminary. Because again, I think the nature of our concerns are so much rooted around allowing screening vegetation. So I think I just want to clarify that. Um so additional thoughts to kind of sum up? Uh I might just.
Uh this is probably not very helpful, but I kind of want to pick up um Jim's comment about the missing middle. My notion of that is missing middle is associated economic, not not floor plans. So, you know, who can afford this? And that's. I I know we're not, you know, we're just, we're not allowed to add so much of these that don't. But these are, it looks to me like these are going to be more high-end, especially that. Getting sort of credit for providing missing middle hasn't, I think they are. They're going to buy more house than high-end houses for decades.
Just to clarify something, missing middle can be an architectural technology. Um it can also have associated economic, um depending on. Where you see. When Mishna talks about missing middle, it can be affordable, attainable, or it can be marketable. They prefer and deal with primarily affordable and attainable when they talk about it. The reason it's in our reports is we look at it in the um purest sense of it. Being the architectural form. But I'm making that clarification, I have no problem.
Yeah, I think that's. And frankly, I don't know much it matters to be honest with you. We're going to check that out. Maggie, did you want to comment to that?
I would just to comment to echo what Michelle said, missing middle really implies these terms refers to. Missing the building forms ranging from single family to eight to ten story. Multiple family buildings. Um and that missing middle is those ranges of houses, housing types in between duplexes, triplexes, scoreplexes. Um and um and then up to up to four stories, which have been traditionally missing. In developing housing in the United States.
But they're not missing in that, so we can't, and then we've got Jeff, Jeffers is picking it up.
Sometimes you guys should take direction from us, we shouldn't have looked at him.
Why? Again, either way, I think the terminology can be, I I think it's rough, I don't think it's worth really debating that much about. Because it's something, again, that we don't, as a commission, have heard before, so I I don't think it matters whether it was.
We're going to, we're going to take it.
It it doesn't matter, so it's housing.
Right, and number five, the extension of the public water, which for uh achieves economy and efficiency, et cetera. We've taken out the portion dealing with this.
I think that was a little.
Can I play out one more motion I had while we were doing this, Megan? The density proposed twenty-eight multifamily dwelling units is appropriate for the subject site. To me, it goes without saying that in this configuration with this P U D. Because in order to change that, I have to come back before the spot and ask for a major and minor on the court.
Correct.
Thank you.
But it was again, the buffer from the against the available tax, because the single family is adjacent. Across the available tax, but I mean, I don't even know like.
Technically.
Technically, it's not adjacent, there's a right in between there, so I don't even know.
That's true, so the the adjacent residential is blocked by an existing rural thing. But for zoning purposes, you would still expect landscaping there because you've got this thing. We're asking or they're asking um. For the way with it.
That was the one, because I had that question too, so again.
Yeah, if there were no bank and.
You'd be requiring it to be much more complex.
Thought, thought, I mean.
So I think, you know, we owe it to you to to just sort of say, or I feel like I owe it to you to just sort of say. A lot of the things that you, that we heard tonight in public commentary are very legitimate concerns and are true. Like this city right now has a crisis of affordable housing. This city right now is unaffordable to the people who teach in this city. To the people who work retail in this city, to the people who work for this city. That's true. But I think you also have to understand the role of planning commission is not to. Pick what gets developed on sites, it's to judge the projects. Pick what gets developed on sites, it's to judge the projects that come in front of us. And we can only judge the projects that owners and developers bring in front of us. And if those projects fit the rules, in this case, the rules of a P U D. We have to approve them, that's the law. Now, next, it goes in front of the city council, I encourage you to take your concerns to the city council and voice them there. They are legitimate concerns, but the role of the planning commission is just to judge projects as they're brought in front of us. And i- in my role as a planning commissioner, I try to stay within the lines of law. And to me, as a planning commissioner, have been on this commission for more than ten years, the project fits that, and that's why I'm voting for it.
Yeah.
I want to pretty much second everything that you just said, I mean, in my role as a planning commissioner. I've taken the same standard view, but they are legitimate concerns. And part of why I'm gonna vote yes, a big part of why is because I want this to get to the council level discussion. That's where we can have a different type of discussion about this than we can at this level. And because, yeah, I think legally this body has to do what it has to do.
I also like to say it's a great project, I think you guys really listened and um. You know, we don't have to wrap democracy here like they have in New England, if the whole town were to vote on this, I'd be voting yes. But it's legitimate, there are very legitimate concerns that we brought up.
Yeah, we kind of took a lot of what I was gonna say too, but but no, I, and. Again, I know in speaking today, you know, some of our members are public in a club, but I I think again, we we take the concerns that. At heart, all of us has been in the community a long time, people, I don't drive through the bridge every day or the tunnel. I know it's there, but one of the cat, one of the categories or whatever, the factors that we look at, as Jim said and everybody said here, is. The overall effect of this project and not necessarily against other projects, but what else is built here? The fact of the matter is, is it is private property right now, and I know people have been saying, you know, parks here, trails here, but. This is private property, and as Jim said, we react to what was given to us. We're extremely fortunate in this community, and we have so much public land available to us in the trail system. But a great part of that trail system, from this side to the, from this site basically to the west side, is paid for by the residents of Dexter. Not all these other taxpayers, so in order to support our trail system, these are the type of sensible, I think, reasonable developments that the community needs. Not to mention, I mean, we've got four new micro businesses brewing along, well, unintended along. The uh, the grand three quarter are kind of there, that leading towards the downtown, this is exactly what those micro businesses need. This is what helps foster additional community, just like we did when we added Westbridge. Just like we did when we added all these other developments that I think we go through a deliberative process here and make it the best we can. And I think to that point, I will give the developers kind of us, I don't like to necessarily. To developers' horns, because I I know, yes, they're into making money, of course, we all are, we all do our jobs to make money. But the, from the first plan you guys brought for, this is radically different, we ripped apart every aspect of that plan. And I I got us every single thing we could poke on, you guys have addressed from the dumpster to the landscaping to to the soil state. Uh, the wetland or the bank restoration, now granted that that's. You know, that people might not like the buildings, again, that's subjective, there's certain things about the project that are subjective, some people like the architecture, some people don't. I'm not an architect, I think it looks great, but what's not subjective is traffic, traffic is not a subjective thing. It is a fact that this judge, this thing generates significantly less traffic than any other use. You know, park or something, a parking, anything else that there is gonna be significantly more traffic. These are people that are gonna walk downtown, because why are they gonna take their cars, they're right there, they're gonna have visitors that are gonna visit downtown. This is great, one other point, I think I want to bring up this also, I struggle a lot with this in the view. If you aren't gonna see this from the park, absolutely, but we're in a city, you can walk underneath that bridge and see all the open space. And it's a private parcel, and I also remember. Spending a lot of time in that park with my children and hearing gunshots nonstop from what used to be there, which was a shooting range. And like nowadays, we, you know, everybody freaked out, we heard it with a, with a one and a half story large metal corrugated metal site. That was completely visible from the park before all that uh, what, black oak, it's in all the buffs over there, took that oak. So I mean, I I think, again, I struggle with that we, it's it's not necessarily open space, it was never intended to be open space. The military sporting goods that was there generated significant traffic. But again, I look back at historical uses of this property, and yes, we're gonna see another great example, I think, is the library. I was on commission when we started planning the library, we took a lot of slack over the library, it's gonna loom over the park, it's destroying trees, which it did, it took out a lot of trees. It it it's gonna loom over the park, but I don't think there's anybody here that would now say the library is a detriment to the park. I mean, in in, yes, that's a different use, I get it, but it's also, and it it's probably just about as tall, I think it's a little taller, about three. Well, actually, at the park level, it's it's fun, because it's same down there, so I think, but now it just kind of molds in there, so. But again, my point is with this is, yes, you're gonna see it, you're always gonna see it. But we do live in a city and this isn't a park, it's not like we're talking about the three hundred fifty year old old growth oak tree on the site. So I think there's significant benefits to public main, I think, again, sometimes I struggle with things like that, because, yeah, you need the main to build your project, so. How wide, the length of that is again, a direct benefit to the residents of Westridge in particular, but our water system as a whole, uh, to get that circulation of water, so. Um, again, I think that the concerns are legitimate, again, in traffic, everybody says they can't get through the bridge now, which is a fact, but. That's one of those things, it is legitimate fact, legitimate concern, but it doesn't have anything to do with this project right now, because it's happening right now, the project's obviously not built. Um, but I just, and again, I I will, I I appreciate the feedback from the development team, I appreciate the presentation. And you didn't necessarily take it lightly, um, all of our concerns, and you brought in additional people, you know, behind you to address it. We have more pointed concerns about the architecture and things like that, you have your team here in the wetland, sorry, I keep saying wetland, but the. Green thing, the bank restoration, I think is a great plan, I mean, I, that is my biggest concern, is those trees and that vegetation along there, and I think what we. Um, added, um, helps address that, and and one of the other points too, that I brought up previously, is about putting larger trees here as a public benefit. And and you have, you're not putting just the minimal one and a half inch cattle curve, whatever trees that you could put. So um, again, the other concerns, I mean, I I don't know where else you can necessarily put additional trees on the site, so um. It's strong, but you're, I mean, I think we all have to acknowledge you're gonna see the building, I mean, there's, but is that necessarily a bad thing?
Exactly.
We're downtown, so.
I, I can't vote on this, but if I could, I'd be for it. I think that this building right here, I think you guys did a great job, I think it's beautiful, I think it's environmentally conscious, and I think it's probably one of the best things we can build on this site. I think I speak for all of us when I say that, I think that building's probably preferable to a shooting range, and I think that it, oh, yeah, right? And I think that, I think that it fits what Dexter is, it's a like a small country, and I think that building totally fits the style, it's brick. And I think it's a positive impact for our community as well, even if you can see it from the park.
Thank you, Neil. All right, any any other thoughts, comments?
Um, I think one thing that's certain areas of the site is going to change, that have changed with time. I can tell you, I missed his name, the Buck Bowl. I was there when Rob Charles was there, it was awesome, my kids there, it was a neat thing, but all I can say is, this is changing. Um, I'm gonna be supporting this project, I think if you look at transportation and traffic and you look at the region. One of the things with traffic here, there's only so many bridges over the creeks and the river. They get from the, and the tracks, to get from the northwest. To the southeast to ninety-four, where everybody wants to go to get um, to.
That is out of the world, but I swim under my head right, and I cross Main Street at eight o'clock. When the school does set, it is a, it. It it's just no problem at all, it's taking my life in my hands, banging people who's on the, who's on the, and starting to go straight across. And if, you know, we, traffic is not. The problem, the cause of this has to do with, you need school bus driver, it's as simple as that, so the people, I mean, I'm not kidding. I'm not kidding, it's just remarkable, how different.
It was interesting you said that, because I was gonna say, it's the bridges over the creeks, the rivers, the train tracks. And it's that we have the school system that I think serves seven municipalities, is that right? And they're all coming here, so.
Right, you have a central, you have a centralized district, school district, campus. And which means you have no school buildings in the.
All in the city.
That would, that's it, you're like bus drivers, then you hear from a tackle, and his kids put them on buses.
So.
There's this, there's a short, there's a solution.
Any, any other final thoughts, solo please?
Better than a shooting range. And they took, what, ten feet off the height, from last time? Big, big change. A whisper of war.
Okay, so with that, I. Thank you, um, seeing nothing else, so I guess can we have a uh roll, a roll please?
Pete Lee?
Yeah.
Marsh?
Yeah.
Robert?
Yeah.
Cardi?
Yeah.
Roberts?
Yeah.
Covert?
Yes.
Waltz?
Yeah. Okay, I'm in for the council, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so moving along, new business, the amendment to the final approved site plan for the championship basket to twenty-three sixty-two. Uh, Bishop Surtel.
And this, and when I imagine my job, I'm actually gonna be, I don't know, I'm reading straight.
We have a few minutes.
He doesn't like, oh, he got a lot of people.
With everyone?
Wow, good it goes. Okay, all right, let's uh. All the eating back to order. I mean, you didn't do that, but it did, nine twenty-seven, okay, so. Oh, wait, we have a lot of commissioners going around. Is, oh, that, but yeah, um. Can't really have chat, we can impress us, yeah.
What is question then?
Well, outside, he's not a commissioner now, except COVID.
I know, right?
Okay, well, all right, Chuck, we'll see what. Wait, well, wait.
I think it shuts up here, just their mom.
Yeah.
I have, I wouldn't ignore, but I I honestly, I I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt in the middle of the agenda, I have.
Yeah.
Can speak, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So I think, Chuck, we can address you, but let's get way till towards the end, because I think, again, it's not fair to this applicant who's waiting right here and has got a presentation up, so. Sorry, Chuck, we value your opinion, but, okay, so with that, um, we're gonna go to the new business amendment to the approved championship gymnastics plan. So I think with that, Michelle, you you gonna say, do you want the applicant to speak first?
Yeah, we'll let the applicant speak.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, let us know.
Put together a quick presentation to just uh highlight the need to change the site plan slightly from. One version of a light screen to a second, which are both approved. Uh, in the plan, just one was approved in our recent site plan, and then modified by city council to the different type of trees. And we're petitioning today to go with the opaque screening as opposed to the green screen. Uh, due to the time sensitivity of the um neighborhood meeting screening immediately. So there's just a question of the code, it does, it does allow us to put in a, in the code, it does say. An opaque screen is allowable to the next slide. We did ask the industry to help us out with some, some estimates of what the, that project would cost, especially after it was changed in city council. From an, from an Arbor Byday to a Juniper, and the cost of the trees are coming in in the uh. Twenty-two to twenty-three thousand dollar range to put those trees in, and go to the next slide, you'll see what a six foot tree would look like. So that's the six foot tree that would be required to be planted, and it does not provide much light screen, especially if you space them out six feet. Uh, apart, even if you stagger them, they still would not provide much light screen. Uh, the next slide is the juniper option, which is also at six feet, does not provide a tremendous amount of light screening. From headlights, because our project is gonna require, especially this time of year, five thirty when it's dark, there's gonna be a lot of uh. Pickup and drop off traffic, which is gonna be a lot of, a lot of headlights against the neighborhood, so if you go to the next slide. Kind of flying through this, but you see the, the common theme is the cost as well is very expensive. This is our option that we would like to propose, it's an eight foot tall wooden fence across the parking lot, so no light would. Penetrate into neighborhood behind, and this is something that we can achieve immediately, uh, before we even move in, and this could be in place. This year, as opposed to trees that would need multiple years to grow in and provide the light screening that we're looking for. Uh, we go to the next, next slide, Grace, and plus the cost is much lower. And the, like I said, this is an immediate solution, whereas the trees, we have six months to plant those, if we put a surety bond, according to what Cheryl tells us. Uh, that's six months of winter where there's no screening at all, where there'd be absolutely no protection for those neighbors right now for any light. Uh, so we, we met with our neighbors, if you want to go to the next slide. We met with our neighbors, two of them came out, and it was actually James in the house that doesn't have any green space behind the.